Welcome to this week's episode of This Week in Calumet City. Mayor Thaddeus Jones has just unveiled a massive $28 million investment aimed at revamping our streets and improving traffic flow. Today, we're on the ground at Torrance Avenue where new roadwork projects are kicking into gear.
We have several road projects that are kicking off within the next couple of weeks here. Torrance Avenue is resurfacing and that will be from Sibley down to 170th Street.
Construction on Torrance Avenue, stretching from Sibley Boulevard all the way to 170th Street, has officially begun. With heavy machinery in motion and workers bustling about, the landscape of our daily routes is changing. As we navigate these changes, it's important to be aware of the road closures and detours in place. From Sibley to 170th, various sections of Torrance Avenue will be closed to traffic to ensure the safety of the construction teams and the public. Stay tuned for more updates and drive safely. The next event was the Veterans Appreciation Lunch hosted by our esteemed Veterans Coordinator, Charles Pryor.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for showing up, coming out to represent National Military Appreciation Lunch.
This special event celebrates our heroes and their invaluable contributions to our freedom and safety. For This Week in Calumet City, we keep you informed on the latest local developments. See you next week. Since taking office, Mayor Thaddeus Jones has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to public safety in Calumet City. This past week, he continues to honor this commitment by swearing in three new firefighters.
We have dedicated ourselves to make sure that our police and firemen are number one in our community, that our residents understand that and our residents are comfortable with going to our firemen and our policemen because they understand the sacrifices that they make for our community. The time away from family can be tough, but here we establishing a family in Calumet City.
When the mayor took office, three and a half years ago now, you know, I told him, hey, we got nice equipment. What I need is personnel and that's coming true. You know, everything that, every chance we get, we're hiring people. But in addition to that, he also replaced our apparatus. I got a new engine sitting in a shop a half hour away from here, just waiting for them to finalize it. We got a new ladder truck coming in January, $1.5 million ladder truck, a $700,000 engine, and I got two amelices on order, $400,000 each. So again, I can't thank the mayor and the council enough for the jobs that they're doing to the fire department. So what we've asked for, we've gotten and appreciated his support, so.
Let's extend a warm welcome to these courageous individuals as they begin their vital roles within our community. Moving on to infrastructure, significant upgrades are underway. Notably, a new sewer line is being installed on Forest Hills Avenue, marking a key improvement in our city's facilities.
We're going to be putting in brand-new sewer, sewer connections to some houses and possibly some brand-new water, replacing some lead water lines. Replacing this sewer line will reduce flooding in this area. Water will be able to flow through this area faster to the main sewer lines and the capacity of it removing stormwater as well as sewerages will be increased.
Stay with us as we explore a week filled with necessary enhancements that are shaping the future of our city. Stay connected to your city by going to your Apple Store and Google Play Store and download the Calumet City mobile app.
All right, everyone, let's give a round of applause to our fire and our policemen, but thank our city council. Thank our city council as well for not only helping get equipment for our firemen and our policemen, but also for helping us honor the firemen, policemen, especially the three firemen that we just swore in at our last city council meeting. So at this time, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. We would like to start the city council meeting. It is 6:12 PM. The hour of six having come and gone. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Never Reddington?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Tillman?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Varner?
Here.
Patton?
Here.
With six members answering the call, we do have a quorum and we are prepared to do the business of the people. I would ask everyone, please rise as we do the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which its name is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, before we begin, I would ask the city council indulgence with deviation from the regular order of business as we seek three presentations and a update from our water superintendent Jerry Sorofka about the letter that went out to the public. So is there a motion to deviate from the regular order of business, please?
So move.
Second. Motion moved by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Tillman. All in favor?
Aye.
So tonight, we do have the WSP presentation, so I would ask them, Val, to come up and let's introduce the presentation. This is for our interchange. So if you can step to the mic, introduce.
My name is Bernadette Fortuna with the Economic Development Department, and I am going to introduce Scott Breha, and he is going to give us a status update on the I-94 Dalton Road interchange study.
All right, thank you, Bernadette. As Bernadette mentioned, my name is Scott Breha. I'm with WSP USA. We are consulting engineering firm in Chicago. I'm the project manager for this study, the I-94 and Dalton Road Interchange PEL Study, and I'm here to give you a brief update on the status of the study. So first, where are we in the study? You know, tonight I'll provide an update regarding the study process. I'm going to touch upon, you know, a quick reminder of the PEL study process. Again, PEL is short for Planning and Environmental Linkages. Provide an update of the area that we are studying. I'll highlight the community engagement that we've done up to this point. I'll outline our community engagement initiatives planned for this summer. The schedule for our first public information meeting and corresponding public comment period. Talk about the survey we'll be launching to gain additional community feedback. Our schedule for hosting a workforce and economic development workshop and the schedule for hosting our fourth Stakeholder Advisory Committee meeting.
Now, Scott, that sounds long as hell. I know it's an important study. Can you condense that to three to five minutes?
Oh, yes. It'll be much less.
Okay.
Yes, it will. I can assure you of that.
Okay.
Okay, so a reminder of the project location. Initially, our project limits were from 142nd Street to the Little Calumet River in the north-south direction. So subsequent to when we first defined those limits, we had a meeting with IDOT and the Federal Highway Administration, and they requested that we expand our study limits up to the 130th Street interchange. And the reason for that is we have to evaluate both full-access interchanges, both upstream and downstream of this location. So we were always intending on evaluating the Sibley Road interchange, but we were not going as far north as 130th Streets. We do have to do operational analyses on both of those interchanges to ensure that anything we do with Dalton would not negatively impact those interchanges, which we are not expecting that it would. However, we need to go through that process as part of the federal process or that evaluation as part of the federal process. So briefly, what is a PEL study? PEL is a collaborative and integrated approach that considers how a transportation improvement project may benefit or impact the environment, community, and economy within a project study area. PEL study blends early planning studies with aspects of environmental review process such as agency coordination and provides opportunities for federal review so the planning study can work and be brought into NEPA. NEPA is short for the National Environmental Policy Act. So projects such as this that have a federal link, that have federal funding and require a federal permit, require environmental review under NEPA. This is a federal law that follows a formal environmental review process to ensure a project remains in compliance with various federal, state, and local laws and regulations. And it allows for an early planning level discussions with the community, stakeholders, as well as resource and regulatory agencies. And these discussions will help to develop a well-defined purpose and need for the project and develop reasonable alternatives for subsequent analysis. So these are all essential in the decision-making process associated with NEPA. So brief overview of the study, the timeline. We've been working on this for about nine months. We started with data collection efforts back in September. We've had a number of rounds of public and stakeholder engagement. We've assessed existing conditions and needs. We've initiated the development of the purpose and need. We're going to coordinate the purpose and need with FHWA and IDOT later this summer. Our third round of public engagement, we're going to identify the various alternatives at the interchange to be studied. That'll conclude probably in the fall of '24. And then some of those alternatives will be dismissed and we will end up with alternatives to be carried forward. So that should occur by the end of '24. We'll coordinate that again with FHWA and IDOT, and we expect to conclude the study next summer, so summer of '25. So as far as public engagement, just a reminder, PEL public engagement is collaborative with stakeholders. It involves Stakeholder Advisory Committee, workforce development, public meetings and surveys, and these activities are consistent throughout the study and it is also data-based. So as far as what we've accomplished, as I mentioned, to date, we've been busy connecting with the community. We received a total of 60 public comments so far in the study. The majority of these have been through our Stakeholder Advisory Committee meetings. We've got three of those. This has been through polling, the survey and polling that we've had through those meetings. We've also worked with the city of Calumet City. On the city's website, we have a tab that'll take individuals to a separate area that talks about this study. Residents or anybody can submit a comment or a question about the study, and there's also some information as far as major exhibits and things of that nature that are posted currently on the website. And as we move along, we will post significant documents and exhibits on the website going forward. So that's what we've done to date. So for this summer, we're pretty busy as far as what we're going forward with here. Again, we're looking to gain public feedback from the public. We're going to be hosting a public information meeting on Wednesday, July 24th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Calumet City Public Safety Training Center. This meeting will be open to anyone who wants to attend. We'll have various exhibit boards throughout the room. We'll have a continuously running PowerPoint presentation describing the study. It'll be approximately 10-minute continuously looping presentation that'll be available in a separate area where people can view that presentation, then move about the room to look at the exhibits. We'll be there to answer questions. There will be a 30-day public comment period after that for anyone to make public comments. And then in the next couple of weeks, we're going to launch a July 10th MetroQuest survey, also to gain additional feedback from the public. You know, this is a digital survey through your phone, you know, with a QR code. We've identified some in-person events, your Jazz on the Grass series. We're going to have individuals attend that to try to get the word out about the study and get additional feedback from the public. And then our fourth Stakeholder Advisory Council meeting, that is going to be July 17th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. That'll be in person. Our first three were virtual. This will be an in-person meeting. And again, that'll be to talk to the members about what was presented at the, at this public open house that's going to occur on July 17th. And lastly, we're going to host a Workforce and Economic Development Workshop on Wednesday, August 7th, again at the Calumet City Public Training Center. And we're going to talk about existing conditions from a workforce and economic development perspective, you know, while talking about how the study could positively impact the area and the local economy. We've been working with Mary Schmidt of the Calumet Region Enterprise Zone on that as far as. That one will be by invitation only, that particular meeting. So it wasn't 35 minutes, fairly short, so that's kind of what we've accomplished in the last month, in the last nine months and what we're doing in the next three months. So if there's any questions that anyone has, I can answer those at this time.
I just want to thank you for tonight's presentation. You were at the Joint 1st and 5th Ward meeting and you provided information to the residents that were in attendance, so I want to thank you again for tonight's presentation.
And then, you know, my name and contact information is here as well as our, the leads on the various items. Individuals' contact information is there, so if anyone has any questions, you can contact me or anyone else about the study and we'll get you an answer. And of course, we have, our website is active or our page is active on your website. Anyone can submit a comment there as well, so.
Thank you so much, Scott. Do you have handouts?
I have saved the date for the public information meeting for anyone who wants to take one of those. I probably have a few extras if anyone wants to take those with them.
Okay. Thank you so much, Scott. Do you have anything else to?
That's it.
Appreciate it. We know this is an important project for Calumet City's surrounding communities, so we thank you for updating us and also working with our IT team to put this on our website and share it with our residents. The next item, while we're in deviation, I'd like the motion to have the clerk read resolution 11-1 commending Officer Jeff McBreyer.
So move.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Tillman. All in favor?
Aye.
A resolution commending Officer Jeff McBreyer. Whereas the city of Calumet City is an Illinois's home rule unit of local government, and whereas Officer Jeff McBreyer will retire from the Calumet City Police Department on June 25th, 2024, and whereas preceding his career with the city police department, Officer McBreyer worked as a member of the ESDA part-time starting in June 1989, whereas in September 1997, Officer McBreyer was hired as a city rental inspector, and whereas Officer McBreyer commenced his law enforcement career with the city police department on June 25th, 1999. And whereas Officer McBreyer will celebrate his 25th anniversary with the city police department on June 24th, 2024. And whereas throughout his distinguished 25-year career with the city police department, Officer McBreyer has performed exceptional law enforcement work, serving as an exemplary model of integrity and ethical conduct for the city, its police department, and the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Calumet City hereby commands Officer Jeff McBreyer on his retirement from the city police department and express their gratitude for his illustrious 25-year career serving the city and its residents with applause.
Let's give Officer McBreyer a round of applause. We'd like to invite our chief up, our assistant chief up, say a few words, and city council, if you can join us in the front. We do have a resolution, a copy of the resolution for Officer McBreyer and his family. We have a plaque. We have a 25-year watch for the officer, but we want to thank you for that. Alderman Ramon, if you want to grab the plaque and then also grab the watch. So 35 years ago is when he started with ESDA, spent 25 years with us, but I can say it's been a joy, Jeff. It's been a real joy. You've been a friend. You've been a great worker. I want to touch on a couple of personal notes from Jeff. Not only did he work here since 1989, but Jeff was born and raised here in Calumet City. With him today is his wife Carla and his son Will that are with us today. So 35 years of service, a whole lot. Throughout his career here, served many different roles. Most recently, he was a special service officer, which encompasses many responsibilities, and he really excelled at mastering every one of those responsibilities. He played an important role in the city's community outreach, in the city police department's community outreach program. Jeff started, provided instruction, came up with the curriculum for our first-ever citizens' police academy. And that academy is designed to create and enhance the trust between law enforcement and the community. And Jeff did a phenomenal job by really instructing on that one, came up with the whole program on his own, and not to mention all the other relationships that he has built with not only the residents but the community groups here, and done a phenomenal job with it. So Jeff, thank you for your service. Thanks for a job well done, and thank you for being a friend throughout your entire career. We really appreciate you and we wish you the best of luck in your retirement. Our assistant chief, some shots. Jeff and I started, he was there before me, but we worked at ESDA together back in the like 1990s, and then we also worked together since then. It's kind of a pity we couldn't be able to retire now, and I'm still working.
You guys present with the gifts that we have.
I think that's what one of the aldermen just requested from him.
Ben, you guys want to come up?
Our next presentation, we sent out letters, went out to residents regarding our water. It was a requirement from the EPA. We have our water superintendent, Commissioner Jerry Sorofka, that's going to talk about that. Jerry?
Yes. We did send them out to people who have lead lines and galvanized line, which was required by the EPA. We did get hundreds of calls. The thing is, in reading the letter, it just announced that you have a lead line. It did not say that you have lead in your water, okay? The other things that were on there was just any precautions with lead, okay? So essentially, how this all started is because of Flint, Michigan, okay? And what happened there was they changed their water system. It wasn't the water. It was changing from lake water to river water. And I can tell you in Cal City that we've been pulling water from Lake Michigan for 100 years, and we're going to pull water from Lake Michigan for at least another 100 years because it's one of the best sources of fresh water in the whole country, okay? So nothing is changing, okay? We're just required to tell you. Now, the city is able, we've been, we did get a grant from the EPA on replacing lines, and we did 300 lines last summer. We've put in for more grants to be able to do this. So as we get those grants, you will be getting a letter and it'll say about replacing. So if you get that letter, it's not a scam. Please call so we can arrange to change your line, okay? It's going to take quite a bit of time to do this because Illinois has a lot of lead lines, all of Illinois. Chicago has a half a million, okay? So it's going to take a lot of time to do this. And in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, they were allowed to put lead lines. The city doesn't build houses. They were allowed to, the construction companies, by plumbing code in the EPA, okay? Now, they don't want them. It's being put copperism, okay? So they will replace your line with copper. So it's going to take a while to replace all these. So again, you know, we're trying to do this, so just look in the mail. If you get a letter, by all means, call. If you have any questions, you can call us. You can always call at the water department. I'd be willing to ask any, answer any questions you have and give you any suggestions, but again, this was required by the EPA, okay? We do lead testing every three years. We are starting to do lead testing, okay? We have certain sites with the EPA that are required to test in all parts of the city to give us a sample of everybody's water, okay? That'll probably be done by September, okay? And actually, if you look on the website, we have, if you go to the first page, there is a little water faucet and it says "quality report." We're required to put those out every year to tell you everything about your water, okay? It's in there about the lead. Nothing in our water in that report says that we have lead in the water, so just to reassure you, okay? I don't know if anybody else has any questions?
Since I know tonight, some of the aldermen were concerned that they received letters, as many residents did as well, so I don't know if the aldermen have questions for Commissioner Sorofka or Ken, if you have anything to add to our IEPA loan that we receive to replace lead lines?
Yes, that program, and you're right that some of the money has been forgiven in grants, but those are loans, and the plan is to use $4 million from the state EPA to be able to replace these lead lines. We're going to move a little bit further from the 6th Ward. We're going to move a little bit to the west and to the 7th Ward as well, and we'll be moving through the whole city. The goal is to do at least about 350 lines in this next round. We're, to date, we've done 312. So it's a great program, and you're right, the federal government requires to the Safe Water Drinking Act that we send out this information, and it is just to make sure that everybody is alerted. However, there's no indication that the water is tainted with lead, but we are, and the mayor is anxious to get these lead lines replaced.
So the cost to residents is zero?
Zero. That's correct.
So if residents are concerned, as we said with the lead line replacement program, this is a program brought that we did in conjunction with the IEPA and through the city council. This program is free to residents. So as Jerry and Ken are talking about this program and letters are required to go out by the EPA, this program to replace lead line is free. So we have the loan, but our goal is to make sure that the loan is forgivable down the road.
That's correct, and the residents will be getting more information in their area. We're prepared to do this so that we can encourage them to sign up. We'll want to get as many people signed up as we can in those, each one of those phases. So be looking for that information coming up soon.
Do any aldermen have any questions for Superintendent Sorofka? Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just some of the residents reached out, and they wanted just to make sure that we weren't hitting their area yet, so maybe just talk about which ward maybe is going to be hit, because I think the letter went citywide, but we're not going to, every house in the city isn't going to go, right? It's just going to, four hundred, I believe, four hundred homes a year, and we're kind of working our way from the south side of town, maybe moving our way.
That's correct. The loan requires that the whole city receive this correspondence, even though there are some people who will not be affected by this program in this coming year.
Any other questions?
No, but I have a request. So this coming Monday is the third and fourth ward town hall meeting. We would appreciate if you could come and explain this to some of our residents, both myself and Alderman Tillman have been receiving multiple phone calls, and it would be nice for them to hear it from our water commissioner. Thank you.
We've received hundreds of calls, that we've talked on the phone with people, tried to answer their question, and they have gone after the phone call, understanding what was going on, so I'd be glad to appear.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate you. There being no further business in deviation, is there a motion to return back to the regular order of business at six thirty-nine P.M.?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner. We are back in regular order session at six thirty-nine P.M. We have, we're on item four, which is public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the city council meeting under public comment? If so, please step to the mic.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Rochelle Marsalaires. I'm at three sixty-five on Campbell Avenue. I'm here, actually, on behalf of the United Campbell Avenue Block Club. I have some of my executive board members with me, if you could stand, because this issue is about our block club. On April the first, we submitted an email to the city requesting a monetary donation to assist us in our activities as a block club throughout the year. We recently found out that that donation was blocked, denied, whatever, you know, you want to call it, due to our address. And actually, I have to correct this, because we kept saying business address, but it's actually our mailing address. We had to have a mailing address, as I said before. We went for our articles of incorporation with the Secretary of State and our five oh one C three, so we had to have a mailbox. We looked into getting a mail, a P.O. box here in Calumet City, but being a small organization with limited resources, we ended up getting a virtual mailbox through iPosta One, which was half the cost of the post, you know, the P.O. box, which we could afford. So when we were told that due to the address was in Chicago where we receive our mail, it was questionable, because all of our activities are done in Calumet City that we do for the residents in the community. So we didn't see why we were denied for something where our activities is here because of where our mail comes from. It just didn't make any sense to us. So I heard that was a concern for those who voted it down, and I'm here to just actually let you know, it just didn't make sense to us, because if you want to know what we do, who we are, the activities we have done, please check out our website. We're at United Campbell Avenue, A.V.E. dot org, and it shows you who we are, who we serve, and all the activities, and events, and even planned events for our residents here in the community. But I think it's a bigger issue than that, and I'm just going to, I'm going to put it, because it's been one thing after another. We started out in twenty-one, organizing, had a meeting with, at that time, newly-elected mayor, newly-elected alderwoman, got their support, but somewhere down the line, it's like, you know, our block was blackballed, you know, from us not receiving text messages like we used to, to us submitting a sidewalk repair list that the residents wanted, you know, they requested for twenty twenty-three, that was not accepted by our alderwoman for some reason. And it was brought back, saying that she wanted, if they wanted it to be repaired, they had to submit something directly to her personally, which the residents were told that. And it, you know, we had a clothing drive last year. We took the clothes up to the Calumet City Resource Center. They told us, we don't accept clothes. So we reached out to our alderwoman, our outreach chair, and she said, let me see, you know, what I could do, and I'll get back to you. She never got back to her, after she left her several messages. And then the last thing is, I came to the special meeting about the remapping, found out that the second ward did get additional blocks, but I recently found out from a response back from your assistant, that half the majority of our block is now in the first ward, which I didn't hear that at the meeting, no one informed the residents, and I'm told it's the people that's on the east side of Campbell, which the majority of the executive board is on, and myself. So we're now in Navarrete's ward, but our neighbors across the street are still in the second ward, and no matter, you know, we can be in two different wards, that's fine, but we are United Campbell, and we will stay united and work together to make a difference in our city. I don't understand when we're trying to, you know, you have residents that care, and we're trying to work with our elected officials as a, you know, a solution, but, you know, when we get pulled down because of unnecessary issues that we have nothing to do with. And I just, I feel like I had to say that, because, like I said, it's been one thing after another, and I really think it's unfair. And we will continue doing what we're doing for our residents, the community, and this great city of Calumet City. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members.
Good evening.
My name is Les Sargent. I live at three eighty-eight Macanoe Avenue. I've been a resident here of Calumet City for the past thirty-seven years. I'm here because I have a complaint concerning a vicious dog located at three seventy-five Buffalo, just this past, not this past Friday, but June fourteenth, as I was walking my dog, this vicious, poor pit bull dog attacked my little chihuahua, Dotson Mix, severely damaging it. The dog has lost its eye. He was, his chin was separated, but the thing about it is that this dog is continually, continually is released back to the owner. Now, my dog is not the first one that this dog have attacked. There's been at least four other dog attacks by the same dog. They continue releasing the dog back to the owner. So I was just wondering what is going to, what can the city do, or what should the city do to remedy this situation?
So we have our police chief in the back that's going to take your information, Chief Colas. Please give them your information, and we'll get right on it tomorrow.
Okay, I just want to let you know that there was a police report made.
Okay.
And there's one other thing, if you don't mind. On our block, three years ago, we did have a speed bump.
Okay.
It was taken out during the fall, because they said it's for the trucks to get through the street. The city is, well, I just say this, our block has been wondering when would that speed bump ever be replaced?
We will work with your alderman to make sure it gets replaced, and please make sure you see Chief Colas.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address public comment? If not, thank you for that, I appreciate it. We're going to have Jewel Stanley come up and introduce our interns. We started having interns in our city, and they have been working fabulously, learning about city government and city hall and all of our departments. So Jewel?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council. So yes, today we have with us one of our interns, Monique Lynn. Would you please stand? She is one of our newest interns, bright young minds that is currently here in the city of Calumet City, making a difference. So they do a wide array, a wide array of things as far as making constituent calls, checking in with residents to make sure that they're doing well, if they need anything, if they have public works requests, if they have a request from the mayor, as well as taking care of handy tasks that we get tasked with from our lovely council, with making laminate things and helping with events. So if you see them around, share a word of wisdom. They are eager to grow. Some want to be attorneys, some want to be officials one day, and they are bright young minds. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Jewel. This time, we have the approval of minutes. We have minutes presented to the city council that's on the agenda as presented. Are there any questions or amended? Well, there's an amended city council meeting for five A. It amends the amendments of October twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two. And then, of course, we have June thirteenth, and then the regular special council meeting on June eighteenth. Are there any other corrections to the minutes?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Alderman.
I apologize, I was not able to read those minutes. Can someone clarify what the amendment was for October twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two, or is that?
So we'll have the clerk for the record state what the correction was.
Thank you.
On the October twenty-seventh minutes, there were two resolutions, one for State Street and the other one, I hope I have the minutes right here, and the other one for...
Memorial Drive?
Okay, one for nineteen hundred State, and then the other one for three seventeen Memorial Drive. Both of those ordinances, they failed due to lack of a first and a second, and they were omitted from the minutes, so I sent the draft instead of sending the final minutes, and so they, it had to be added on there that it failed, so both of them failed.
I apologize. This is a topic we covered in our special meeting recently, correct?
Yes, it was.
All right. My apologies. Yes, I'm aware. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions regarding the minutes? If not, can someone please make a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Wilson, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Kirk, can you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 Reports of standing committees, Finance, Alderman Gardner?
No report tonight, Mayor. Just would like to just tell the council to be aware of any upcoming budget meeting dates. I don't think they're scheduled as of yet. Be on the lookout for those meetings. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Safety, Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real briefly, I'm going to have asked the police chief to step up and just kind of let the residents know that we will be approving tonight some of the purchases of police vehicles for our Public Safety Department.
Thank you. I'd like you guys all to consider that item on the agenda. It's to replace some aged vehicles and add some new vehicles to the fleet with updated technology, updated safety features, so I'd really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Public Utilities, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I would like to let the residents know, I piggyback off of Commissioner Sarofka, as you are receiving these letters, please follow through with getting in touch with the Water Department, allowing them to provide you with test kits if necessary, so the water can be tested for you in areas that's needed, and follow the process as the lead line replacement, once it gets to every ward, again, will not cost the residents anything, but it will be a necessity. But we cannot do it if we do not have complete buy-in with the residents. I do understand being cautious, but this is something that will help the city in the long run, as well as help your families. We don't want anybody to experience the downside of pure water, and because we're being proactive in this step, please allow the Water Department to do their due diligence, as well as the engineer. I will continue to meet with the blocks that call me out. We review everything from water to our lights. I still have a request. I don't see anyone from Public Works here. There is a light, Mayor, that's on Pulaski, right on the corner of the police station. It should be facing outward on Pulaski, instead it's shining directly into the home, and the homeowner has made those complaints. Because it's not a common light, we have to do our, fix that a different way. So we do also, when we have our corner-to-corner meetings, speaking about public utilities, go over what the differences are between your lights as well. Again, should you need any assurance or clarifications on the water or the lead project, please feel free to contact my office at seven oh eight, five eight six, four nine nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Ordinance and resolution, Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. No report.
Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, Welfare, Alderman Navarette?
Thank you, Mayor. No report this evening.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Works, Alderman Smith?
Yes, good evening. Happy to report that we currently just received two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for the Summer Youth Employment Grant through Representatives Jones, Evans, Senator Sims, and Senator Harris. This money will supplement our city youth program. There are forty-two kids at our Public Works, at Public Works for the summer program. There are also forty-one kids at the Youth Violence Center. We're doing the summer camp with the Dalton Park District and other programs. We're also doing our mentoring program at the library with Champs. We started a young ladies mentoring program. So that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Those are great programs, and if you want to see our kids working in our departments, this grant that we received, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, we're supposed to receive another two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars from the state of Illinois to hire youth, sixteen to twenty-one, who did applications, all from Calumet City. So it's a great program, and I want to thank our Community Economic Development Department, our Youth Violence Program, for not only getting this grant, receiving the money, the money has been received, or we wouldn't have started the program, but thank them for this great program that we're doing for our kids this summer. Under city council reports, let me, let me start off with my report. We know that many residents have received notices regarding the property tax bills, and I know many people are outraged. While the county assessor attempts to balance the taxpayers and shift the burden from businesses to residents is noteworthy, we know that it's causing great harm to our communities, and we simply can't let it go on like this. So tonight, I'll be asking the council at one of our next meetings, we're going to present a resolution directed to the county assessor and directed to County Board President Tony Preckwinkle, to Governor Prisker as well, asking for the south suburbs, including Calumet City, to be considered a special taxing area to lower the taxes on homeowners who've been in their homes for more than five receive another $297,000 from the state of Illinois to hire youth, 16 to 21, who did applications, all from Calumet City. So it's a great program, and I want to thank our Community Economic Development Department, our Youth Violence Program, for not only getting this grant, receiving the money. The money has been received, or we wouldn't have started the program, but thank them for this great program that we're doing for our kids this summer. Under city council reports, let me start off with my report. We know that many residents have received notices regarding the property tax bills, and I know many people are outraged. While the county assessor attempts to balance the taxpayers and shift the burden from businesses to residents is noteworthy, we know that it's causing great harm to our communities, and we simply can't let it go on like this. So tonight, I'll be asking the council at one of our next meetings, we're going to present a resolution directed to the county assessor and directed to County Board President Tony Preckwinkle, to Governor Prisker as well, asking for the South Suburbs, including Calumet City, to be considered a special taxing area to lower the taxes on homeowners who've been in their homes for more than five years or more. I will be filing a bill in Springfield for the same request for the resolution that we have, and I know residents are concerned about their taxes. We've sent out recent information that Calumet City has not raised taxes in years, and your portion of your tax bill in Calumet City is 37 cent or more. Let me say that again. The portion of your Calumet City tax bill is approximately 37 cent or more. These numbers come from John Kasperich. These numbers come from our finance team. That portion of your tax bill for all the city services that we provide, and let me explain the city services that we provide. We talked about police. We talked about the fire department. We talked about our animal control, our Public Works Department. We repairing street. We just showed you a video regarding the street repairs that we're doing and the construction programs. Our new trap-and-trap program where if a resident has animals that get in their homes, we come and remove those animals because this city council started that program just for our residents. Alderman Smith talked about our mentoring programs and our youth employment programs. We have our Jazz on the Grass that all the residents have been talking about. We doing our police patrols on bikes, our senior city sticker program, and much more. So all of this, with the portion that we're doing for your taxes, I'm committed to making sure that the assessor who started this program, creating these higher tax bills, we're going to invite him to come out and explain his methodology with raising the taxes in the South Suburbs and raising taxes and shifting the burden from business owners to residents. So again, at the next city council meeting, I will be presenting to the council a resolution that will go to the governor, go to Cook County Assessor, Fritz Kegge, and also go to Tony Preckwinkle, asking them to reconsider and reexamine Calumet City and the property taxes. We know that this is important to our residents, and I just want to assure everybody that we're going to keep fighting for that. Next couple items that I have, we had, we talked about our construction programs. We have events in July that I would like to announce. Next Wednesday, we're having a Fourth of July celebration, and it is drive-through only, which means that no one can walk up and come into the celebration. You have to be in the vehicle. You can bring your lawn chairs. You can bring your kids with you. We will have items for the kids. We will have items for adults, but this is a family-oriented event. We want to make sure that everyone has a good time, everyone celebrates the Fourth, but we also want to do it responsibly. We'll have our police department conducting the outside, the ulterior, the inside of the event. So we want to make sure that people come in only with vehicles. We're not going to allow people to walk up to the fireworks. It's open to all Calumet City residents. It starts, what time does it start, Jewel?
Fireworks start at 9:00 p.m., but the gates open at 7:30.
So we're going to open the gates at 7:30. If you want to get there early, please come. It's going to be at our Sears Building and our fireworks. We do have passes for all the Alderman. We're going to have a section also for our seniors. So we want to make, again, make sure that everyone celebrates responsibly. To that end, we also going to have our police department out about unwanted fireworks. We're asking everybody to celebrate responsibly. We know that people are going to go out and purchase fireworks, but we're asking everybody to celebrate responsibly. Our police department will definitely be out for anyone who has excessive celebration. So we're going to make sure that people are celebrating responsibly, and our residents' safety is our main concern. Again, I want to thank you guys for allowing me to speak. Under, that concludes my city council report. So Alderman Navarette, we will go to you for city council reports for the First Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to announce that I do not have a date for July's Town Hall yet. I think Oliver and Gardner, Chairman of Finance, alluded to we're going to have our budget meetings in July. Those are quite a few meetings to go line by line through our city budget, so I don't want the Town Hall to, I guess, conflict with one of those meetings. So as soon as those meeting dates get out, I'll do my best to advertise the July Town Hall. I will also be asking for consideration for the upcoming budget for funds to commission a study for Memorial Drive from State Line to Superior. Memorial Drive is home to a lot of anchors in the First Ward, the Wilson Elementary School, Memorial Park, the St. Victor Campus, the Burnham Avenue Intersection, and also Wentworth Intermediate School. So again, just kind of recapping, it's been a while since we've, it's been about a year or two since we've commissioned a study here in the First Ward. Recapping, of course, the Burnham Avenue Plan that we initially started with, and then the State Street Plan that kind of turned into this larger, decer program that the presentation touched on today. So again, these, those two plans have kind of grown into a much larger project. The Burnham Plan, for instance, did receive an $800,000 grant along with $4 million that was placed in the rebuild Illinois budget. IDOT has since came back and said that they are willing to go through with the entire Burnham Avenue revitalization vision, which was a lane diet, kind of reconstructing that road. What that means is, I think, is a commitment for 2030, which, of course, is a long ways away, but there's a lot of engineering studies that need to happen, and those take time, and those funds in the state budget take time. So again, it's good news. At the same time, you know, residents are wanting something quickly, and, you know, just Burnham Avenue is going to take some time, but again, has grown into a much larger project. So that $4 million, I believe, our city engineers and our mayor have worked with IDOT, have, IDOT has agreed, from my understanding, and can be corrected if I'm misspeaking, but to reallocate that $4 million to Pulaski Road, which is still in the First Ward and kind of the borderline for the Fifth Ward as well. So still, the funds will stay in the First Ward, which is good news. But again, that Burnham Avenue Plan will, will take some time to develop, as we're hoping sometime in 2030. In the meantime, again, we'll prepare for those things for Burnham Avenue and State Street. As you, as you heard, it's going to take another year to wrap up that Pell Study. So again, some time for these things to develop, but again, I think, you know, these studies and commissioning these studies are the first, first step into creating the buzz around these corridors and to be able, for our economic development team, a great tool for them to go after grant funds. So again, these will be the topics of conversation at the next Town Hall, and again, that date should be coming, coming out shortly. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Wilson, Second Ward?
I never heard you speak that long. I just want to start off by saying, as an Alderperson, it has always been my goal to be very accessible, very transparent, very open to understanding and hearing the needs of the constituents. Having said that, it is not an Alderperson's job to pick up clothes or donations or try to find out where to take those donations. I have done that in the past as an extension of just who the God in me is, but that is not our elected duty. Our elected duty is to be fiscally responsible, to make sure that your tax dollars are used in a way that is responsible, in a way that we are ushering in the best of Calumet City with what we are given and what we have. I am one of seven votes. If you do not get your way as a resident, there are seven of us here. The person that spoke, I don't even recall being here when you say you were denied something. I'm denied something often, but I wanted to say that and address that. We, especially in the Second Ward, have a vision of we. We also have understanding that if it hurts one, it hurts too many. I believe that it is easy to want to connect to the one person, not understanding that I have to connect to 4,500 of you. So just like something is pressing to you, I may have a gentleman, which we had recently, unresponsive and found dead in his home. So though we want to get your donations and we want to get everybody happy and pleased, we all have elected duties that we have to fulfill, and picking up clothes is not one of mine. Mayor, I do want, I would like to ask if the Second Ward's Department of Justice Committee can join in on you regarding, with you on the tax concern. We did receive a response that the increased tax burden on residents is a violation of HUD, and it is being considered on the federal level, the new redlining, keeping people in certain communities and certain areas. The tax burden is really affecting not only my ward, but all seven wards. And so whatever can be done to reduce and freeze the taxes would be greatly appreciated by all of the constituents here. I do want to go over some dates. On August 3, we are having the Community Growth Event. There will be resources, food. We will have some back-to-school items, some resources for seniors. There are vendors that are coming to hire on the spot. So if you're looking for a job, that is something you want to be there for. Right now, we are partnering with 79th Street BBQ and using their parking lot. Because of the waiting list and the vendors that are coming, I'm going to speak to the mayor to see if we can move it to something a little larger. So that's August 3, and more information on that will be on AlderwomanWilson.com. August 17, we will have the Vision of We Awards that will be held from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the VFW on Hur Street. So we're coming across town. Right now, the nominations for the Vision of We Awards are open. If you have a neighbor that goes beyond, above and beyond for your block, nominate them. If you have a young person that is volunteering or sees you, Ms. Johnson, I see you with your grocery bags, and they come and run to help you, nominate that young person. If there's a volunteer in the area, nominate them. We're also not, have a section open to nominate small businesses in our area that always go above and beyond when something happens here in Calumet City or there are residents in need. There were companies that came out Sunrise Cafe, M&amp;J, when we had the fire in the park. So those organizations and companies need to be recognized. If we can continue to support our own and keep our dollar circulating, we would be a stronger Calumet City. Also, August 31 is a back-to-school event in the Second Ward. It is at the Church on Saginaw. They just had a name change. I want to call it Higher Ground, but I think it is the New Bible Church of Calumet City, New Life Bible Church of Calumet City. And so that will be an all-day event. I am praying for the 500 block of Hoxie and the death of Mr. Louie. He was known to the VFW, to various groups here in Calumet City, and he will be missed. I have to take a moment to shout all the way to Atlanta, Georgia, to my son, Courtland D. Wilson, who will turn 21 in 24 hours. Four years ago, he was making his announcement as I was taking my oath to office, and he was announcing he was attending Morehouse. He is now a senior in Morehouse, and pretty soon, he will be 21. I'm also going to congratulate my youngest son, Chase. We will go to Las Vegas, where I have been asked to award Chase with the Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award. He has taken two years to produce 4,000 volunteer hours from packing boxes for seniors for food, for, from helping break up leaves, you name it. He has done it, and I am honored to give him an award from President Biden. Should you need me, feel free to contact me at 708-586-4990. You can call. You can text. If you do not reach me, I have six interns. One of them will return your call. You can email me at monet, M-O-N-E-T, at AlderwomanWilson.com. Please do not forget to go on AlderwomanWilson.com and nominate someone for the Vision of We Awards. The nomination closes on July 10. We will make the announcement of the award winner on July 15. We also have five people we know right now that will be receiving Presidential Lifetime Achievement Awards on August 17. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. Number of things, July 1, at 6:30 is the Third and Fourth Ward Town Hall Meeting. That is held in Downey Park Fieldhouse, 300 Jeffrey Avenue. And as Alderman Williams said, Jerry, we do hope to have your presence at that meeting. August 17 at noon is the Third and Fourth Ward Annual, Eighth Annual Back-to-School Picnic. We are still taking volunteers, so if any residents want to assist in the planning process, contact my office, 708-891-8193. Also, we are doing block club meetings all throughout the month of July. We are just asking residents, pay attention to the mail. We are going to announce which blocks we're going to be by mail. I really want to encourage Third Ward residents to participate in the I-94 Dalton Interchange Meetings. The information that's collected at those meetings is extremely important and will impact the Third Ward tremendously. And so I'll be announcing those at our meetings. I'll make sure I continue to put the meeting out, but for anybody that's listening today, please try to participate in those meetings. They're on Zoom, and some of them are in person, and we really want your participation in information and opinions. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Fourth Ward, Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. First round of God makes all things possible. Just to piggyback off of what Alderman Tillman's saying, the Third and Fourth Ward Meeting is July 1, 6:30 p.m. We'll see you there. Shred Day, this coming Saturday, River Oaks Cooperative, One Chestnut Drive, that's at 158th and Paxton. We will be starting at 9 a.m. and going until 1 p.m. That is document shredding only. So pleased, I know many of you have been asked, have asked to facilitate the shredding, so thanks to our council partners. I really appreciate your support for, with that. That is this coming Saturday. I also want to thank the people that attended the June Team Celebration and all those sponsors and anyone that had any success in the, anything to do with the success of the event. It was a great event. I want to say we had probably over 500 people throughout the day, wonderful talent. We had a local DJ showcase that turned out very well. We also had a radio DJ, DJ Ferris Thomas, who set the party right. All right, so I really appreciate you, really, really appreciate those people coming out, showing their talents, the vendors. Thank you all. And all the volunteers, I want to thank you all as well. The Block-to-Block, Fourth Ward Block-to-Block Meetings, we will probably be starting those in late August to into September when it starts to cool off a little bit. I don't want to have anybody out block club meeting, passing out in sunstrokes or anything like that. So be looking out for those dates, and that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Fifth Ward, Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to the Fifth Ward residents. First, I would like to publicly thank our Calumet City Police Department. On Sunday, June 15, 2024, in the early morning, my office received a report from a neighbor of two loose pit bulls that fatally attacked a small that fatally attacked a small cat on my block. My neighbor, Dan, and I drove around looking for the loose pit bulls. After spotting the loose dogs and contacting the police department, an officer was dispatched to the 100 block of Michigan City Road. Dogs were picked up and transported to Animal Control. Special thanks to Officer Bustos, Sergeant Jason Minklitz, Fifth Ward resident, and Officer Pablo from Animal Control for an outstanding job. Next, I would like to thank Public Works for the grading of the alleys on the west side of Wentworth, South and Northern alleys, flow in the north and south direction that were graded last week. Continue to contact my office residents with any questions, concerns, and issues. Also, I was reported this morning for a property in the 400 block of 155th Street. Special thanks to Public Works again for getting over there and clearing the overgrowth of vegetation. Lastly, on June 23rd, my 98-year-old grandmother went home to be with the Lord. So I would like to thank all of the Fifth Ward residents that reached out to me. I would like to thank members of this elected body for their prayers and this administration. Thank you. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Our hearts go out to you. We know your grandmother was special to your life, and she's smiling right now. And just thank you for sharing it with us. I know it's emotional. We look forward to being there with you when you have the arrangements.
The arrangements are going to be for July the 6th, from 10:00 to 11:00, 11:00 to 12:00. That's going to be at 11300 South State Street at the Starlight St. James Missionary Baptist Church.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll make sure we communicate that to employees as well, Alderman, if you don't mind.
That's fine. Yes, thank you.
Alderman Smith?
Yes, just want to remind the Seventh Ward residents that the next Seventh Ward Monthly Town Hall Meeting will be July the 20th, from 10:00 AM to noon at DA's Banquet Hall. If you have any questions on that, please contact the Seventh Ward number, 708-891-8197, or A. Smith at CalumetCity.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Before we move on to informational items, I just want to make an announcement. We are looking for animal control. We do have two positions available. So if anyone's interested, please go to our website and apply. And we will be announcing some markups to what we're going to do to animal control. We know that we have to go over and fix the facility, but our animal control department has been special to Calumet City, and we want to, we want to send some out in our next newsletter, too, to residents, reminding them that not only is Calumet City a pet-friendly community, we received a couple of awards for pet-friendly, but we also have to do education to our residents about being a responsible dog owner. I'm hearing too many stories about dogs roaming free. So we're going to ask our Inspection Services Department, Building and Zoning Department, and also our Police Department to step up enforcements and then have a class for our dog owners. So we will be putting that also in our new city newsletter because we want to thank you for being in Calumet City, but we also want to have responsible dog owners. I was at my house, and my neighbor walked up to me with his pit bull unleashed. And thank God, my brother was there, who is not scared of dogs. I'm not saying that I'm scared of dogs. But to definitely get the pit bull under control. So we want to make sure that people are educated on our laws and educated on being a responsible dog owner as we move forward in Calumet City. And Val, we definitely have to highlight Calumet City receiving the Pet Friendly Award because I think that's important to not only all dog owners, but to our city council as well as we move forward. Item eight on our agenda, informational items to be accepted and placed on file. Does anyone have any questions regarding item eight, A through H? If not, can someone make a motion to accept these items and place them on file?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman. Second by Alderwoman Wilson. All in favor? Motion passes to accept these matters and place them on file. Before we go to items nine, action items, I would like to ask our city engineer to give us a report and update on item six, which is our Green Alley Project, and see if any council members have any questions. So Ken Chastain, our city engineer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's good to be here with you tonight. This is the second year of this popular program that you initiate, which is the Green Alley Program. It's designed to resurface the alleys in a way that takes the water into the ground using permeable type of pavement and paving blocks. So that's an exciting program that we're looking forward to starting. A little bit different than last year, Mayor. We're going to be having another firm do the engineering and the construction on the project, and we're going to help and assist them. We've been working with a firm, a small business that was formed by a woman in the South Suburbs African-American engineer called Transland Engineering. They're actually on the Pell Study as a teammate with WSP. And they will be doing the engineering design as well as the construction on this project. So we've been working with them as sort of a protege mentor type of relationship to help build their skills, and we're excited about that. Two more projects, real briefly, that we're excited about. One is that we're working with CED to be able to apply for a FEMA grant, a Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program grant. And we're working with them closely with the MWRD to try to get millions of dollars to help with that stormwater needs that the city has. And we know that the federal government's been reaching out to us, to the city about getting some help here as a result of the flooding last year. And then finally, 166th Street, we have a Rebuild Illinois Grant that you helped us get. It's $1.2 million for 166th Street to be able to put in new water main and correct some of the leaks that have been going on there. And that will be going out for a request for qualifications for engineering firms to be able to do that engineering work. So we'll keep moving ahead.
Thank you. And I want to commend you, Ken, and commend Farnsworth for listening to the city council. I know the city council asked you guys to mentor minority firms. I know Alderman Navarrete was leading that charge, and Alderman Gardner, to do more business with minority firms. And you guys not only listen to the city council, but also we have an ordinance asking that all businesses not only adhere to the minority participation, but actually not make it a goal, but make it a plan in their engineering. And I want to thank you guys for doing that, for listening to the city council. Item nine, before we move on, does anyone have any questions for Ken on item six or the other projects you mentioned?
Do you have where each ward will receive the new alleyway?
Yes, we do. There'll be, there'll be five blocks that will be done this year. And of course, you'll note that there's a limit to how much we can do because most of it's paid for by a grant from the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. And I figured you were going to ask me that question, and the city engineer, Matt Berger, knows those locations, but I can't say them offhand.
Oh, come on.
I wish I could, but I don't, I don't know them. But I do know there are five blocks, and we're excited about those. And they are spread throughout the city.
And confirmed for the record that the First Ward is in the...
In the program.
Yes.
Yes.
Matt has confirmed the First Ward is in this round. Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know about where the other ones are.
I don't, I don't know about the other ones either.
We'll get everyone a list.
Yes, definitely.
Make sure you get everyone a list, Ken. We'll send Matt a message as well. Any other questions of Ken?
I do, I do. I don't know if you'll be it because I was working with Matt. But last year, CMAP did a little traffic study for the torrents. And then if there was any other funding available, we were going to try to pull it for the Second Ward, to try to slow down driving throughout the blocks and switch up, making some blocks one-way directional.
Right. That, that study hasn't been concluded, but you're right. That study is a basis to be able to go after some money from maybe the county or the federal government or the state to be able to do something. Then they usually do require a study. So I know that they're looking to get that finished, but CMAP should be concluding that, I would hope, by the end of the summer.
Oh, I hope so. Thank you.
Item nine, items nine, one through 18?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Item number 17 seems to be missing some information. Is that just a location of Asher Construction, that, that block? Or is there an address or a time? Or are they requesting any services from the city? Do we know?
They're not requesting any services. They just wanted to get it approved, Alderman. And they do this every year. I will provide more information on that. I thought it was in there, but we'll provide more information on the time, place, and date. Well, the date is July 20th.
Yeah, July 20th, I think we're good.
So if we approve it, I will make sure I send it to the Alderman tonight or tomorrow.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Is there a motion to prove items, new business items, nine, one through 18?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Williams. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson? Yes. Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Alderman. Most items approved. Item 10, a new business items, building permits. One and two, are there any questions regarding the building permits as, new fence permits as presented?
Thank you.
If not, can someone make a motion to approve item 10, one and two?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Everyone, we discussed and did the resolution. Alderman Tillman, under new business resolutions, is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pass under new business item one, a resolution commending Officer Jeff McBride.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderwoman Wilson. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I would like to call for a motion for executive session to discuss pending litigation, the purchase of real property, and personnel, and other pending legal matters.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderwoman Wilson. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
We will be in executive session, brief executive session. We do plan on coming back and conducting business. Is there a motion to return to the regular order of business at 8:50 PM?
So moved, second.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Smith. Alderman Smith made the motion, second by Alderman Tillman.
Sure.
We have two matters left. For the record, Alderwoman Wilson is not on the roll at 8:50 PM. We have two matters left under financial matters. Alderman, do you want to take them separately, Alderman? I mean, not separately, but you want to call the order, Alderman Gardner?
Yes, so I would like to make a motion to approve financial matters, items one through seven. As so presented.
Motion made to approve items one through seven as presented?
So moved.
Second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And for clarification, are we amending item number eight?
Yes, Alderman. You have the motion to amend item number eight?
Okay, so I would like to take item number eight separately. I would like to make a motion to amend item number eight and to direct the City Treasurer to make monthly payments to Delange Financing in the monthly amount of $1,243.98 for 11 months totaling $13,683 until April 30th, 2025, from the mayor's fleet account. Further, direct the City Treasurer to issue payments to Delange Public Financing LLC from the mayor's fleet account.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
I'm sorry, I missed something. What, what happened? Why do we amend it?
The numbers were incorrect, Alderman. The numbers as presented on the agenda was a greater amount. The numbers presented by, through the motion with Alderman Gardner are the correct amounts. We just conferred with city attorney Mike Stillman, and he confirmed the, and Alderman Navarrete, and confirmed the correct amounts. The corrected amounts are reflected in the motion.
Okay, so the invoices that we have is wrong, or the invoices?
The, the numbers are wrong, Alderman. So it was annual payments, but those annual payments should have been six-months payments as opposed to quarterly payments. And it's correctly reflected in the motion as quarterly payments, monthly payments. Madam Clerk?
So I would also just like to include the accounting number. I guess, should the motion reflect the account number? Because mayor's fleet account currently doesn't exist. As mayor's fleet account exists under your, under the budget, under your executive for equipment purchases, 01021-55100. Should that be included?
Yes. So motion amended to include the numbers.
So moved.
And the clerk has the correct motion as well with the numbers? Correct, clerk?
Yes.
I have the language here, so if you need a copy of it.
Yes. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve items number nine through 39. I want to take 40 separately.
It's a motion to approve items one through 30. I'm sorry.
Nine through 39.
Nine through 39. Motion made by Alderman Gardner to approve items nine through 39. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on items nine through 39.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item number 40, under financial matters, I would like to make a motion to amend, to reflect the motion to payment of $500 to Joseph Weathers for the 622 Entertainment Services from the Seventh Ward Neighborhood Improvement Account.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner on item number 40. Second, is there a second by Alderman Smith? Madam Clerk, please call the record on, roll on item number 40.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Yes. That's correct. And I would like to make a motion to... And I would like to make a motion to approve items 41 through 43 as so presented.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Smith to approve items 41 through 43. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll, items 41 through 43? Forty-one through 41, 41, 42, and 43.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Unfinished business, Alderman Smith?
Nothing at this time, here.
Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Gardner?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Williams?
Just real quick, I want to publicly express my sincere condolences to Alderman Gardner and his family.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, Alderman Tillman?
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Unfinished business, Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick reminder, I think it was discussed last meeting, was if the requisition submitted can be reviewed for back-to-school event, and any issues be emailed to me if there's anything I got to do different. And if not, if that could be placed on the next agenda. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. There being no further business to come before the city council, is there a motion to adjourn at 8:58 PM?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Is there a second to the motion? You guys want to stay here all night? Second by Alderman Navarrete to adjourn the meeting at 8:58 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 8:58 PM.